Okay. I'm going to call tonight's meeting to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Pro Tem Wal.
Here.
Mayor Matsumoto Wright.
Here.
Councilmember Murray.
Present.
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Councilmember Page.
Present.
Councilmember Sonmore.
Here.
Councilmember Woodard.
Here.
That concludes roll call.
Thank you. Next is public comment. Do we have any public comment?
We always have to look. No one signed up in person and no one signed up to comment remotely and no written comments were received this week.
All right, thank you. So next will be the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, members of council. A couple of things to mention tonight. First, on the 20th, there will be a water, temporary water stoppage to a couple of homes right in that area to extend water line for a new housing development. Thirty-four new houses are going in. We're working with each individual homeowner and making sure they're aware of the times and all those good things. Also, just a reminder of the pool closure that's coming up. We did push it back a week, so the last day the pool will be open is May 16th, and then it will be closed from the 17th through the end of June so that we can make repairs to the pool liner. And did want to highlight that the WCIA grant, Washington City's Insurance Authority grant that we received to repair the sidewalks in Evergreen Playfield, that work's been completed, so those sidewalks are done and ready for the summer. And we are working with the Public Utility District to plant some extra trees along the interurban trail throughout the community. So come to an agreement there and we'll have some new trees along that trail. And lastly, for my report tonight, we've been working with the community group for a continuation of our summer event, summer family friendly event, and we've heard that there may be some cancellations of some of the parts of the event and waiting for confirmation on that, but I can assure you, and I've been assured, that the parade on July 18th will happen this year. So the parade will absolutely happen and we'll wait to see what the decision is at the community group hopefully later this week.
Is this a group that we just gave the hotel motel tax to?
Yes, it is. Yeah, the 19,500.
All right, thank you. Does anyone have any comments or questions? Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, city manager. Could you go back to the water stoppage? I started to take notes. Can you just, what area was that and what was the date?
It's May 20th, and it'll be in the area of the intersection of 239th and 56th.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so now we'll move on to, oh, change of agenda. Do we have any changes in our agenda?
Yeah, we, yes, Mayor. We would like to move item number nine, which is the Fiscal Sustainability Task Force members, to item number seven, and then bump seven down to eight and so on until the end of the agenda.
Do we need to vote on that?
No, I don't think so. I think it's, we're not voting on any of the items, so.
All right, thank you. Okay, so next is, we have a proclamation for a person who was a, such a big person in the city here, Karen Miller, who just passed a while back, and we have her whole family here, and we're going to read the proclamation right now and present it to them. So, do we want all of you to come up or the? Because we're going to read it right here. So, how many, there's eight of you?
Well, there's six children.
Six, okay. Wow. So she had a large family and as you will find out when I read this, what she was to our city. Okay. City of Mount Lake Terrace proclamation to Karen Miller. Whereas Karen Miller was born in Jordan, Minnesota, on January 4th, 1933, and married Jim Miller on May 1st, 1954, and settled in Mount Lake Terrace, Washington. And whereas Karen and Jim Miller raised six children in Mount Lake Terrace where she resided for 70 years. And whereas Karen Miller was passionate about youth sports and advocated for increased commitment to girls athletics within the area schools. And whereas Karen Miller served for several years on the Mount Lake Terrace Library Board and was the first female appointed to the Mount Lake Terrace Planning Commission where she served for six years, including one term as chair. And whereas, in 1978, Governor Ray appointed Karen Miller to the Board of Trustees of the Community College District Five, transitioning to Edmunds Community College Board of Trustees where she served as chair four times. And whereas Karen Miller was appointed to serve on the Snohomish County Council by Governor Gardner in 1992, won reelection twice, and served as chair twice, and was the only second woman to serve as president of the Washington State Association of Counties. And whereas Karen Miller was awarded the Maybelle Chapman Award in 1997 for her tireless contributions to the South Snohomish County community. And whereas Karen Miller was passionate about affordable housing and volunteered with the State Housing Finance Board where she was appointed chairwoman by Governor Locke in 1999. And whereas Karen Miller retired from her last volunteer position in 2022 with the Snohomish County Public Defender Association at the age of 89. Now, therefore, I, Kyoko Matsumoto Wright, Mayor of the City of Mount Lake Terrace, on behalf of the city council, hereby present this proclamation to the Miller family in recognition of Karen's outstanding achievement and dedication to the people of Snohomish County and significant impact on the Mount Lake Terrace community.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for coming. You want to, do you want to say anything before we take pictures?
I'll say just a couple things. She actually worked right across the street for 30 years at least as a legal secretary for Levy Johnston, so she was always right here. And whereas, she was probably the best Jeopardy player you would ever know in your life.
Do we want to just say the names of those of you who are here? Like, you're Mike.
I'm Mike. Dawn is the next oldest. Mark after Dawn. Suzie, Julie, and, oh, John.
So the whole family made it tonight.
And our dad was a Mount Lake Terrace police officer for 20-plus years and a city councilman, too.
You want to put that up?
It's like you're upside down.
I'll get out of your way.
I think for, to get all the councilmembers, we should probably head up front here.
Are you doing the proclamation tomorrow or is Laura? Okay. Go bring it with you. Okay. Will do, thanks so much. Thank you. Well, I live two blocks away from her, so I still live in Mount Lake Terrace. I haven't moved very far from home. Two blocks away.
I haven't moved far from where I grew up either, but you're much closer.
Thank you, good night.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you. All right, so next is the proclamation for the Law Enforcement Appreciation Week, and we'll have our councilmember Page read that or present it.
Good evening. City of Mount Lake Terrace proclamation, Law Enforcement Appreciation Week and Law Enforcement Memorial Day. Whereas in 1962, President Kennedy proclaimed May 15th as National Police Officers Memorial Day, in the calendar week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week. And whereas, established by a joint resolution of Congress in 1962, National Police Week pays special recognition to those law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty for the safety and protection of others. And whereas, the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved in the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. And whereas, there are more than 800,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States. And whereas, the members of the Mount Lake Terrace Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of this city. And now therefore, Mayor Kyoko Matsumoto Wright, on behalf of the Mount Lake Terrace City Council, do hereby proclaim May 11th through 17th, 2025, as National Police Week and publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. Anybody want to come forward? Who wants to accept this?
Do you want to say something?
Come on now.
I would just like to say that this means a lot to us at the police department, and we very much appreciate your continued support. It means a lot to us.
Yes, now we're going to do some pictures.
I'm sorry. All right. So next, we just moved, changed the agenda, so the next item is now going to be the review, review the city manager recommendation for the Fiscal Sustainability Task Force members with our city manager, Jeff Knighton.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, members of council. This fiscal task force, the long-range task force, has been quite a while in the making. We started discussing this last year. May was the first public meeting on May 2024, and then we presented several times since then to get to this point, and we thank you for supporting the creation of this task force. The city is establishing the task force to gain insight from a diverse array of community members, and we have, we had 27 applicants before the deadline. All of them were fantastic, and all of them would have contributed very well to this task force. What we were looking for is to ensure that we had a breadth of experience, a diverse variety of generations, so we scanned the spectrum, homeowners, renters, and a wide diversity of income levels to make sure we get all the perspectives that we possibly can to gain those insights to present to council later this year or very early next year. So the city sought up to 15 applicants to serve on the task force, and it's a four-to-eight month commitment, and all of the members that we recommend this evening have said that they have a strong commitment and that they intend to participate in every meeting of this task force. During the 14-day recruitment process, we had 27 applications, as I mentioned, and we selected the following members from the applications. Brent Meyer, Charla Vaughn, Clark Morgan, Daniel Looma, Ellen Lavoy, Eric Notfelt, I believe is correct way to pronounce it, I'm sure he'll tell me if I was wrong, Gina Ruelis, Ian Tucker, Jamie English, Janine Kerr, or Jeannie Kerr, Key, excuse me, Jody, I believe that's Rasmussen, and we left the last name off there, so we'll confirm that name. Kendall R- Janathan, I believe. We'll get that pronunciation correct. Tvece Cashin and Tashliva Verit. And all of the task force members have a commitment, as I mentioned, and we wanted to make sure we represented all those diverse groups to get the widest perspectives that we can to make recommendations to you. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions and happy to get this started. We had initially planned to start the first meeting in June, and we're still working out the schedule. It may be the end of June, it may be the first part of July, but right in that timeframe is when we'll get started.
All right, are there any questions or comments? Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm either going to tell on myself right now or it didn't happen, which is, can we have access to their files in the sense of, I presume they did an application, just love to see what they had to say?
Yeah.
Obviously need to hear the interview, but I'd love to see what they presented in person if we had access to that. I apologize, I don't recall seeing that.
We haven't, but I can, I'd be happy to. Yeah.
Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, city manager, and to the staff who participated in this. I just wanted to say thank you to all the folks that raised their hand. This is an incredibly important body of work, and I feel very fortunate that we are in a place as a city where we've got so many folks who are willing to dig in on this important issue, and I'm just excited for the folks that you selected, and I appreciate down further in the report, it talks about some of their experience, and I appreciate that many have been involved with the city in different capacities, serving on our boards and commissions, or active volunteers with the city, and so I think that's a really helpful perspective that's represented as well. So just appreciate the intentionality and time and all of the folks that are going to be involved. I'm looking forward to hear what they come up with.
Councilmember Page?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a suggestion, and so that when we have these various names of people we're going to go into the record, maybe it's a good idea that alongside of those names, we have a pronunciation, you know, available so that when you're reading a name or just anybody looking at the name, or when they first meet these people, they'll know how to say their names and they won't be struggling over it.
Yeah, and I apologize for not pronouncing those correctly. No disrespect intended, but I think that's a valuable suggestion, I appreciate it.
I'm not just pointing at this right here, it's just, you know, a lot of times we have stuff that's undocumented and we don't know how to pronounce their names because it doesn't say how to pronounce their names, and, you know, that's what they bring to the table, their names, so we got to at least be able to pronounce it.
Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. A quick question about the other 12. What was the bedside manner of letting them know? Because I'm thinking to myself, that's awesome, but 12 people didn't make, quote-unquote, "the cut," and I'm just curious what we said to them. I'm imagining we probably tried to find them some other spaces or something, so.
So I haven't reached out yet because I wanted council to confirm these choices, but when I do, I will definitely thank them and explain similar things that I did tonight. We were looking for those, you know, the wide perspectives of experiences, and any of them would have contributed wonderfully, I'm sure. It's, it was our choice to make sure we, everybody that we could was represented.
Excellent. So then, since it's still in motion, I would like to make a recommendation that we do thank you cards to the 12 who didn't get it, and if you can get all the council to sign it, so be it. I know I won't be available next week, but I don't think it has to go out next week either. So just putting that out there again, just bedside manner of folks who did take a chance, did put their name in, and it just didn't match up this time, but the important, important part is, we mean this time, try it again. So I think a nice little card to acknowledge that we knew you were in there would maybe help.
Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. As long, I appreciate the conversation, as long as we're, I think, talking about follow-up with folks. What is, Jennifer, can you remind us the deadline for boards and commission applications? Did we, May 19th? Okay, so that might be if we're doing follow-up. I think that's a really good opportunity if they haven't. I'd imagine some of them already have submitted their names perhaps for other boards and commissions, but if they haven't, we would obviously love to see them participate in that process if they're interested.
All right, anyone else? Okay, thank you. So we don't have to vote on that, just FYI. Okay, so now we're going to move on to the next agenda item, which is the review of the resolution and interlocal agreement for grant and Snohomish County, for grant with Snohomish County for Parks and Public Works with Carolyn Hope and Gary Schmick.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, city council. I'm filling in for Jeff Betts tonight. We're here tonight, Gary and I, to talk about two grants that we are being awarded from Snohomish County Council. The Snohomish County Council had requested cities to submit projects to be funded by REIT funding as part of these council-city partnerships projects. We put forward two requests that were approved by the council. I'll talk about the Parks project, and Gary will talk about the Public Works project. The Parks project is to replace playground equipment at Firefighters Park. So behind the fire truck, there's some individual pieces of play equipment, and those will be replaced by a top playground, so a two-to-five-year-old playground, and the sand will be replaced by, you know, wood chips that are playground-safe and on a border, and there'll be some improvements to the pathway connecting to that playground. That project is being awarded $30,000 by the county, and we'll be augmenting that with $20,000 from the NPIS fund in the budget.
All right then, thank you, Carolyn. And the Public Works part of this is a flashing beacon that will flash children present in the vicinity of the Cedarway Elementary School. So it's not adjacent, but it's very nearby to 23rd Street Southwest and 44th Avenue West. So, you know, this is a intersection that is highly trafficked, kind of a safe route to school, and we've learned, you know, about the significant need for this from the community. That we are, we'll be ready to act on this right away. We'll have to purchase some material and then install it, and I did learn today, there's a couple community members that are very aware of this and really have highlighted its importance because one of the school guards, school crossing guards is going to be out of commission for the rest of the year, so this is really important to them. So I think we picked a good spot, and it's even more important, so, and this will be $10,000 from the grant.
So the city will be required to install these improvements no later than December 31st, 2026, and we will ask council to authorize these two grants and adding $40,000 to our budget to implement the grants and bringing this back on consent agenda next week if the council agrees.
Do we have nods? Councilmember Sonmore?
I was just at Firefighters Park last weekend, and I know the fire truck is getting a little worn in its age, but I think we've done so much to update that park. We cleared out the trees so the briar neighbors can see through, so it saves, keeps pretty safe, but I think it's a nice way to honor our fallen or former firefighters, too. I noticed Clay Nye has a memorial sign put on top of the other memorial sign, so I was happy to see that, but I think that's going to be a nice pocket park to get updated. And then on 223rd, can you, it's just going to be a flashing beacon on top, is that?
Right, right.
And it was the former Cox's house on the corner, now it's like a group home there. They put up a fence, but luckily now they've lowered it, and that really blocks sight. Even now, even with it lowered, it's still kind of blocked, so you kind of have to pull out a little bit into the sidewalk to see who's coming.
Right.
From like the QFC side.
Okay.
So I'm hoping that will help quite a bit because I walk that area quite a bit, and I see some people that don't even want to use a crosswalk. They go down a little bit and they run across, so.
Okay, well, we'll have our folks check that for the line of, because there is a regulation in there for line of sight, so we'll just make sure that it actually is meeting code.
And I think the city did, because they had a full-size fence.
Okay.
And then they cut it back down, but it's still, I think it's well enough on their property, but if you could double-check.
Absolutely, yeah. It's a very, it's a standard, no, it's a very standard calculation that we use for triangulation that on any corner, any stop, that you need to have a certain line of sight to your right or left or straight ahead, so, and that's, you know, something we really, we do need to enforce.
And it's a nice, you know, we've got one right before the high school, and now we've got one right before the elementary school.
Right.
So I think that's a nice addition to 44th.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, this is a comment, I wanted to applaud the city for choosing projects on the east side of the city, because I know that we have been hearing that they feel a little left out, and so I appreciate the opportunity to show them, we haven't forgotten about you, and I hope that you will blast that through social media in some way, shape, or form.
All right, anyone else? And this will be on consent agenda? Thank you. Okay, and next is the review of the interlocal agreement with the United States Department of Agriculture, USDA, for wildlife management, again with, well, this time with Carolyn Hope.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So this is an agreement that we have had for many years, since 2002. We did not renew it in 2024 because we had low geese count and also the USDA wasn't very active during the COVID times, but that has changed, and we have some staff to work with at USDA, and we also have increasing numbers of the Canada geese down at Lake Ballinger, so we are looking to reactivate the ILA. This would be for four years, and we would have an annual contract that the city manager could sign for $2,500 or thereabouts. The contract allows for technical assistance, population monitoring. contract allows for technical assistance, population monitoring, and control of the Canada geese population. And as I mentioned, this is a $2,500 annual expense. Although it wasn't in our budget, we do have enough money to cover that in our park services budget. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Are there any questions? Councilmember Salmur?
This is one, and it's probably well-known. I never vote for this or never want to vote for this because last year, 2024, we didn't do it, but we've been doing it since 2022 or 2002. And you used to see those beautiful V formations of our Canadian geese. And I mean, this is 22 years of, you know, oiling the eggs. Years ago, they'd go out and put nets on some of them. And I I just think that I'd rather use that money elsewhere. So it's just my two cents.
Anyone else? Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate Councilmember Salmur's thoughts, and, you know, I definitely recognize that there are mixed feelings on how we manage wildlife. It's not an easy thing to do. And I will say, though, I was just down at the park at Ballenger Park with my kids this week, and there are definitely a lot more geese than there have been in quite a few years. And it does have real impact in terms of like the cleanliness of the park. There's a lot of droppings. I don't know what we call geese. But, you know, it is it is not the it really makes it hard for the park to be used in significant portions of it. And I'm sure there's also impact on other wildlife because they're not a native species. And so I just I like I appreciate that we've tried to find a balance and that, you know, when it didn't make sense, we perhaps didn't do it. And I think it's something we should continue to look at closely. But I will say, like, I have you can see the difference. And it's, you know, I think it's an important thing for us to think about how we balance those things. But I appreciate that you brought it forward and support moving forward with it this year.
Anyone else? Councilmember Paige?
So that I understand, the contract agreement is for the remainder of 2024 through 2028? Excuse me? Or 2025, I mean, right? The contract is for a year, and the ILA is for four years. Okay, and the $2,500 for the 2025 is for the six months remaining? Or is it going to be half of that? Just give me a moment, and I'll find the contract document for you. The contract is for from March 2025 through August 2025. Yeah, so it's for this year. Okay, and how much is that going to be? It's $2,500 a year. So it's active during the summer months, essentially. Okay, even though it's only going to be for a few months? Am I hearing this wrong?
You bring up a good question, if you don't mind me piggyback on there. When do they lay their eggs? So I wouldn't think it would be summertime. So wouldn't they have to do it in the spring?
So for the the contract itself, it's only active, so 2025, 26, 27, 28, only through March through August. So it's it's not a reduction in cost because it's only six months. They only perform the work in those months.
Go ahead, Councilmember Salmur.
So do they have a so what do they do in August?
I have no idea.
I haven't heard about the eggs for a while, so.
See what they used to do, and they'd throw the nets over them, and they'd kill all the or they'd have the dogs out there chasing.
We don't know if we're doing that anymore. We have. Horrible. So.
Is this on the?
This is proposed for the next week's consent agenda, yes.
So it and if anyone wants to pull it off and talk about it at that time, we can do that?
We can we can find out what the typical nesting period is for Canada geese. I know this is what the USDA has always done, and.
It's March, April, and May. Sorry.
Okay.
It's what?
And the eggs incubate for 28 to 30 days.
During the time during the summer?
Yeah, just March, April, and May.
All right. Councilmember Protem, well?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It sounds like we have at least one no vote, so we should probably pull it from the consent agenda now and just place it in regular action. Thanks.
Thank you. That's why I was mentioning that. Okay. Is everyone fine with this? Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I should ask the question, what's the alternative if we don't do this? We I imagine the geese just all grow up, and then they map it to this location, and they keep coming back. I mean, what's the I just looked up the word addling. I'm deeply disturbed by it. I'm just kind of like, wait, what is the alternative here?
So.
You know, I recognize USDA is national and local, but at the same time, I think a good question was just raised, and are they at least using different practices now? I mean, you just said dogs. I'm like, wait, what happened to the goose gun?
Addling is oiling the eggs.
Yeah, no, I looked it up. I hadn't.
That is the first choice. And if we want a more lethal option, we have to request it.
More lethal?
Like what Councilmember Salmur was referring to. And I don't know if those are the practices they use today. But so the these are non-migratory Canada geese, so they would just continue to populate. So and they could potentially have water quality impacts as well as, like Councilmember Murray was describing, we already have significant impacts from the droppings. So.
From from what I understand, from the past, the population grew so much that it was it was pretty hard to it. They apparently they're, what do you call their droppings?
Yeah, Jeff Betts had added in the staff report, in the 80s, we had over 200 geese down at the lake.
Yeah, I just remember getting a report about the overpopulation of the goose or geese. And we had to do something about it because it was getting to the point where it was getting a lot of debris, and you couldn't and 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 when that hits the water, apparently it makes it's 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 not poisonous. It's just it's something happens. I know they had that problem over at Skryber Lake Park, and we had to stop feeding feeding the birds because the geese were eating it. And then all of their droppings went into the water and into the stream, and it polluted the stream. So that's all I know. That's my my little knowledge of geese. All right, so we'll we'll pull it off, and then we'll vote on it separately next time. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you very much. And then next is the review of the May 15th agenda. I'll just look at yours because I have to now go in all the way. Okay. Everyone's looked at it, and it looks like it's going to be another short meeting. I say that, and I jinx it for you. All right. So then we'll move on to the council comments. Does anyone have any council comments? Wow. We all want to go home. Okay, so next is adjournment. We're adjourned.